Okay, I'd like to call.
Right under the wire.
Yeah, right on the wire. Launch the planning board's order. August nineteenth point twenty-four six thirty. I have continued open public meeting for site plan application. For sixty-eight, seventy, and seventy-two Pleasant Street. Map fourteen, class of nineteen-three, S three A multifamily residential above floors with office on the first floor.
I'm not liking this.
I don't like this.
Why is there a lot of traffic over here?
You gotta move that.
I'm not liking it.
This building back in here for twenty years.
I'm gonna change this.
Yeah, we gotta.
It's been up here now.
We gotta move the whole table.
Robert, can you get that?
I'm twelve feet.
Can you move that table back? To a two or whatever. Yes. We'll move this one. How's that?
So.
Here we are.
So. Stop making excuses for not helping.
We couldn't have done this.
Well.
Okay. I guess we should.
Okay, I'll open up the second.
Do you wanna push it?
Continued open public hearing for special permit use. For sixty-eight, seventy, and seventy-two Pleasant Street. Map fourteen, class of nineteen-three and three A multifamily residential above floors with office on the first floor.
Hello, Chris Anderson, Danny Engineering. Uh, we report the board a brief meeting. Uh, for the structure of the multifamily development with a office use component as well incorporated into it. Uh, this is located at seventy and seventy-two Pleasant Street. Uh, just to re-familiarize the board with the plan, we have Pleasant Street runs along the side through here. We have the sixty-eight Pleasant Street property right here with the existing two structures, seventy and seventy-two being further packed to the site. Uh, since the last meeting, uh, we reevaluated the architectural layout of the building, uh, incorporating the columns and everything like that. As the board may be remember, uh, one of the requests as part of the filing was a waiver and reduction of the three foot offset from a building line or column line. As the board may remember also, this is an incredibly tight side build to the environmental restrictions from floodplain, riverfront, waterline, floodplains, a whole bunch of other stuff. And it's a generally narrow, uh, site to begin with itself. Uh, but what we've done is we revamped the layout of the column lines in order to alleviate, um, the spacing requirements to maximum extent practical. Uh, we were able to eliminate one of the column lines in the middle, uh, which opened up a lot of space. Um, and we've shifted around and adjusted the column spacing as well, um, along the inside portion of the sites, uh, in order to gain an extra few feet here and there in order to increase that offset. Uh, so what we've done is we improved the situation, but we haven't fully remedied it, uh, due to structural, uh, constraints as well from actually building the structure. Most of the columns that, um, are still requesting a waiver from are actually located behind the curb line, um, if you will. So it's no different than, um, any kind of sign or anything else in a normal parking lot configuration that's located behind the curb. Um, but there is noted, uh, several columns that are in close proximity to the drive aisle and the parking stalls, uh, that will, uh, need that waiver request. Uh, this follows the general intent of most parking garage designs, um, elsewhere in the state if you were to do a parking lot. Uh, so, uh, we feel that we do have enough inadequate maneuvering space in order for vehicles to get in and out of parking stalls without too much, uh, conflict. With that, uh, we did also do our, um, photometric analysis of the site as well. Uh, we are, uh, providing a few additional light posts, um, along the perimeter of the parking to provide illumination for the site. Uh, we are, uh, requesting a waiver for providing full one-foot candle illuminants, uh, throughout the entire site. Uh, we are achieving it, uh, closer to the core of the building itself. Uh, but we are requesting a waiver from it for closer to Pleasant Street primarily because there are a lot of residential components or neighbors in the area. And we don't want to, uh, create the illusion of a parking lot, if you will, we want to keep it more residential in nature. Uh, but we are keeping it within the core, so where all the primary pedestrian access points are going in and out of the building, part of the meat of the actual parking lot area will all be eliminated appropriately. Uh, with that being said, we did respond to the, uh, department comments, um, but if there's any questions for the board, I'll go ahead and answer them.
Well, I'm sorry, refresh my memory, this is, uh, it's residential in the back. And is there a commercial over it as well?
Uh, there is a commercial on the first floor, uh, so because of the elevation of everything, the first floor is actually elevated about four feet above existing grade. And then.
I gotta open up just a second. Okay, continued open public meeting for special permit floodplain for sixty-eight, seventy, and seventy-two.
No, use.
Pleasant Street. Map fourteen, parcel nineteen-three, three A multifamily residential above floors with office. And, okay.
Did you do the one for use, John?
Yeah, I did that before.
Oh, you did?
Yep. Special permit. What am I?
That was six thirty-one, we didn't. For use, there's two, one is for use, one is for floodplain. One is site plan, you open that.
Yeah, I did that.
Then the second one was for use.
Right.
And the third one is for floodplain.
I've done all three.
Great.
So put your bag on the floodplain. Um, office on the four feet above, yeah, it's a tough problem to solve, right, with the water and that. Yep, so the first floor you walk up to it and has the office, eighty accessible unit, and then it has a townhouse style apartment configuration on the inside.
Chris, is no storage?
Uh, yes, so we have no storage, we'll be on the back side. Um, so as part of the overall drainage design, if you will, uh, we're using a vegetated strip at the very tail end of the site. So naturally the pot trucks want to come in, they're gonna push down towards the end, so we have storage down there and a little bit up here.
Okay. Now you have access to the back property. Can you get around to the back there?
Yes, so, uh, as I was stating, um, there is a filter strip that has, uh, stone in the period of it.
Okay.
Uh, and a break in the pavement, so there is a, um, accessible route, a technical path around the entire site. Uh-huh. Uh, we are putting a guardrail just so that people don't have the habit of continuing through by mistake.
Okay.
Um, but there is a large flat area towards the back, which, uh, we're kind of envisioning being utilized as a recreational space.
Okay.
We can't physically put like a hard packed surface or some patio or anything like that. Because of the environmental, uh, components of the project. Uh, but we are able to put, um, more, uh, like picket fences and other non-structural components in there, uh, to that's recreational.
How far back can you go with that?
Uh, it's about. It's about thirty.
The dark green area?
Up to the dark green area.
Up to the dark, and you're not gonna touch any of that in the back there? Can't access.
Yeah, it's up to, uh, riverfronts and lines very much from that part.
That, that, yeah, I just, I was back there the other day and I just wasn't sure how. Yeah, I hope it wasn't, it was pretty dense.
Nope, and if you were to go inside now, it's stayed in the back.
Yep.
Um, and in limit of our quote-unquote building and previous area, it lines up wouldn't have.
If it ain't.
So, Chris, I, I appreciate the work that you did to try and maximize parking spaces, uh, in respect of constraints that you're under, but. I still have a problem with saying that somebody's not gonna be able to get a parking spot because their neighbor has John Sykes truck and they can't fit next to a pole that doesn't have enough, doesn't have enough space. When we talked about it last time, we had suggested maybe increasing the number of units by one or two, was within giving plenty of space for that, did you look at that at all? Or is that something you could still consider? Cause I have a hard time. I, maybe somebody buy a house where I know they're not gonna be able to park is a problem there.
So we did look at that, uh, but because of the overall cost of construction nowadays and the fact that this is a very unique, uh, construction process, being the building being so anti-normal, if you will. Uh, the cost of construction goes up and any reduction in units would make it not viable.
How about on the parking end, you gonna number the spots per the unit? Or is it just free for all when they commit? Cause maybe that'd help out.
It wouldn't matter.
It would.
If you get somebody with a big truck and you get the spot next to the pole, depending on how they park.
You're not gonna get out.
You're not getting, oh, you're not gonna get in or. And then what you do? Get a house. See, you don't park it on the right side of the street.
So we lose how many, cause the poles, if that were to be the case, how many spots would, would there?
So that would effectively eliminate all these parking spots here. Because the column line is not close to the maneuvering aisle itself, so you can't drive through. Um, and then you would lose, um, all those, this is compliant minus these last two columns over here. Uh, so you would lose a significant amount of parking in order to make that purchase. Um, and we did look at, that was one of my questions to the, uh, structural engineers, is how much can you overhang the building? But again, because of the height of the structure and the depth and beams that.
I understand the issue.
They are runways, right?
Yes.
So you have some control over who parks where?
There is some control over who parks where, yes.
I mean, the grid foot compact car, don't we?
Assuming that people will listen and park well, yeah.
They don't.
Yeah.
A ramor is gonna have to deal with.
Good luck with that.
And. And I do, I, in other multifamily developments where it's more laid out, more single-family homestyle, yes, I would agree. The larger vehicles do become problematic, no question about that. Uh, but this is a, uh, a harvest, uh, style building, um, and most, um, most tenants don't usually have the larger vehicles. They have, you know, sedans or subcabs, but.
That's. That's an assumption.
Yeah.
It's an assumption.
Maybe, maybe that's about the place assumption.
Well, policy is an assumption too, so what about that, the, the little shed on the, on the front there, what is that?
So two of the bays are dedicated to the sixty-eight, uh, Pleasant Street property.
Yeah.
And the other bay is dedicated to landscaping equipment for the actual set, so. Um, so we can't physically fit any more parking in that area, uh, because the sixty-eight parcel has to have its own parking. Uh, so we do have the two dedicated spots for that.
Right. Well, they have parking on their own lot, right?
No, it's located on the adjacent, on the lot, but it's shared cross easements for one another, so that the sixty-eight, um, owners can get onto their, uh, parking stalls and we can gain access to their portion of the property.
Maybe when they rent it.
There's thirty-seven.
You find out what the vehicle's like, too, beginning to manage the vehicles, when they rent the apartment.
Well, if you have parking in front of that garage, how do people get into the garage?
It's more of a storage garage, but it is, it functions similar to a single-family home's garage detached in this manner, but. You have effectively the two bays in the garage for the sixty-eight, um, Pleasant Street property. And they have two spots immediately, effectively immediately in front of those, so very similar to a single-family home design.
Twenty-two two-bedroom units, how many? Two bath units, one bath units?
Uh, one bath, I believe. Two bathroom, one bath.
So this is less likely to be, you know, two, two adult professionals each with their own suite, en suite, right? I mean, thirty, thirty-seven spots for. Twenty-two units.
I don't know about that, the requirement is thirty-six, right?
Definitely five.
Five.
It's one point five.
Five M L.
One point five.
So it's, it's the middle.
Thirty-six, you got one all but. I don't, this guy, maybe when you rent the apartment, if you try to.
Yeah, thirty-six are required.
You come in the garage and then you assign the front spots. There wouldn't be a problem, I don't know.
If you assign a spot, some of those bigger truck, you assign it outside.
Yep.
Outside.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, you get a lot of parking outside.
Right.
So you're not, everybody's gonna have a pickup truck. Maybe you just assign those ones that are, uh, in fringe zone, just to contact.
That's gonna be managed.
That's gonna be managed. It's a man himself when it comes to, you know, maybe, maybe they don't sign spots, but.
Okay.
You know, whatever.
I, I don't, I see Paul's point, but he, they require thirty-five spaces.
Thirty-six.
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 Thirty-six, I don't know, he has thirty-five.
It requires twenty-five, which is one.
So thirty spaces for residential.
Oh, and then for, and then for the office, my, my point being.
Thirty-five, that would be thirty.
Three.
Thirty-five.
Twenty-five. He has the, he has the number that he requires. Twenty-five.
Yeah.
That's one and a half, they're not married.
Thirty-three.
Shouldn't it be, I want to be thirty-three, I'm a mathlete.
There you.
It is, but then he's.
Thirty-three of the other house.
But you've got it, it's thirty.
No, he has thirty-five spaces.
No, I have thirty-five total, I need thirty-five total.
He's getting broken up by five.
No, so this is.
This is residential.
That's not the residential.
This is number twenty-two, that's one point five.
Twenty-two.
It's residential means for the office.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Two, three, thirty-five.
Yeah.
Either, either way, he, he exceed.
You, you, you mark it, but I, I think we question the maneuverability of those for large vehicles. Can we?
And again, under the normal, you know, with, with columns, I would question the maneuverability.
Yeah.
Now saying I wanna shrink it beyond what the minimum size is under the ordinance. I mean, I'll support the rest of the way. Chris, not to quibble, but in, in the report, it's saying that six parking spaces are required for the office use?
Yes, so as part of the overall redesign, we shrunk the office space. That allowed us to free up additional spaces, so we didn't have to kill off as many residential, so to try to balance over the site as much as possible. So we did reduce the overall parking count in order to gain that, restrict that, but we compensated for it.
Right, reducing that, in my job.
There might be a number of people that have one car.
There might be, you know, and there might be the, there's no way to know that.
Yeah.
I know, but the numbers are there, but they're not small spaces, they're standard spaces.
Standard spaces. They're standard spaces.
Standard room between the spaces.
Isn't that the waiver you're requesting, is they're not standard spaces?
No, so the waiver is requested for three from a column. So for example, on this column here in the center of the site, we have three, we have three feet on either side.
Right.
Of it going in this direction, but I don't have it going, let's go say.
It shrinks the spaces.
Semantics.
It's, it's.
Well, I'm saying, I think you guys are saying the same thing in different.
I think we are, um, but what we have is the three feet feet going with the length of the driveway, but we don't have it going across the driveway. So as the car pulls in, it's gonna be able to sneak in through and not hit that column line in that area. Um, so for example, that's how they're gonna make the maneuvering, and that's what the intent of getting the three foot off the column line is.
But coming out with a column there.
Coming out with a column there, they would have to back in and then pull out.
If the lot is full, they're not getting around two fifty in or out of one of those spots, they're gonna have to park at the end of it, of the lot.
Don't have to park further down.
That's what it is.
Oh, big trucks? Pickups? Yeah, I mean, unless the bays been company when they, when they rent, they have something in the garage truck.
I think it's manageable.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I like it.
It'll be tight, but now feel it.
Well, people gonna do their homework, if they, people are all about their cars and how close they can park to their residence, if they think it's not gonna work, they're not gonna rent the unit.
You don't have to look there.
Yeah.
Did you hold any other hearings?
He did.
Yes, well, that. Okay. I'll open it up for you, audience, do I have?
Did you wanna do department comments first?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I have.
Did we do? Tell me they're gonna watch them.
Um. Will the major teams.
There's more.
If I have no problem with the action.
Did you see my memo from August fifteenth?
Yeah.
There's, um, the special permit for floodplain is not complete because there's a section of the ordinance that has to be addressed and it hasn't been addressed.
So on the relative to the special permit for floodplain, um, as we said last meeting, the FEMA burn panels are currently being updated, they were supposed to be, we were hoping it would be out, uh, in the summer. Um, evidently they have not done, so.
But this is unrelated to the FEMA burn panels, this is section twenty-two dash thirty-four point seven point three in the zoning. If you look on the very last page, page seven of my memo, it talks about the special permit for floodplain. And it references that section, there's a whole list of criteria that has to be addressed. It's in the zoning book. Page seven. Bullet point number two. He went through the section twenty-two dash thirteen, which is good, but there's a separate section under floodplain in our zoning ordinance.
I'll double check that to see if I need to, how to address that, but I believe we are compliant with all, but here you have something to write, I think you're right.
Um, I have the zoning book right here, I don't look at it, it's just a lot. Under floodplain district. Under floodplain district, starts here, I'll go with Carol. It's, um.
Thank you, Carol.
Floodplain district and. Twenty-two thirty-four point seven point three. Specifically. It's on the next page, we got it. Twenty-two dash thirty-four point seven point three.
Okay.
Just like, you know, like you normally do, Chris, where you write what the requirement is and what your response is.
Yep, well.
Same thing as you always do, that's all we need.
No, no, I can, we can provide that, I didn't realize I missed that part.
Has nothing to do with the. The map's not being updated. Uh. It's a long list of.
Well, it just says, the planning board in accordance with forty-eight-nine may issue a special permit, subject to the applicable provisions of this ordinance if the application is compliant. With following provisions. Applicant has submitted adequate information upon which to base a decision, including but not limited to a site plan. Prepared, okay, well, he's done that.
Yeah.
What was floor elevations of a new or expanded building? Certification by a professional, certified by a registered professional engineer that the proposed use structure, building encroachment, improvement, et cetera, will not result in any increase in the flood level during the occurrence of a hundred-year flood discharge. Meets the minimum standard set forth in the National Flood Insurance Program rules and regulations. The applicant has demonstrated that, that the project will not approach upon the regulatory floodway so as to result in any increase in floods within the community during the occurrence of a base flood discharge. In certain zones, all water courses that have not had a regulatory floodway designated, the best available. Shall be used to prohibit encroachments and floodways which would result in any increase in flood levels during, within the community during the occurrence, occurrence of the base flood discharge. In certain zones along water courses that have regulatory floodway designated on the city's. Specific map encroachments are prohibited in the regulatory floodway which result in an increase. If the app, in flood levels within the community. If the applicant proposes to relocate or alter a water course, or if the city acquires data that changes the base flood level, elevation. In certain areas within six months shall notify FEMA of these changes and then says wait to change them. The planning board may specify any such additional requirements and condition as applies necessary to protect the health, safety, welfare of the public and the occupants proposed use. I think it just, I think Elizabeth's just looking for you to.
To certify this, and I think that we needed a, a professional engineer's stamp saying that. You've met the requirements of the.
Correct, and as part of the filing, we actually, uh, did a floodplain analysis for the area, there's no floodway on the property. Uh, so it's just straight floodplain, um, did do a cut fill analysis of the floodplain area. Uh, so we are providing compliance with that, so we're not billing anything without compensating appropriately. But.
Identify the floodplain border.
Yeah, so like this is.
You're not approaching a floodway.
Nope, cause there is no floodway. So we're, we're in the floodplain, so we have, do have that demarcated on the site. Um, and, and the last sheet of the plan said there is that cut fill analysis documenting that we are providing compliance with that aspect. Um, we can provide written response to that without issue. Um, the board cannot physically close on the special permit floodplain yet because we are still waiting for that FEMA component, uh, which hopefully should be coming out soon. Um, but we can easily provide that prior to closing. With that, back and forth on the site. Just some, some kind of statement saying that.
Okay. But did that say we need a professional engineer's stamp to confirm that?
Isn't that him?
Yeah, I did, I did that.
Okay. Yeah, you are. Love it.
Audience.
Okay. I have a comment.
Yep.
If you're going to speak, just state your name and address for the record.
Went up to the audience. Have any in the audience who would tell the comment? That's the second time by having anyone in the audience had a question or a comment. During last time, any questions? Here now, I'll close it. The audience. Back to the board. We have a. Do you think we covered? Everybody shy outside?
So.
I think the only thing is we gotta wait for FEMA.
So the floodplain special permit can't be physically closed yet.
Right.
Uh, but the other two, a discretion for it to be closed.
Right. Do you have any idea when FEMA is gonna show up, uh, yeah, I have an idea.
If I have.
Have you had any, uh, communication with them at all?
Uh, so I've had conversations with DPW, uh, I guess back last December, they had their final meeting. They go over all the changes that they needed to do to it, and we were kind of expecting it to be issued on July fourth, which is usually how they kind of do their thing. But they haven't issued them yet, so hopefully within the next few months of the publication.
Okay.
Um, well, if we have everything, I'd make a motion. To close the, um, hearing for the site plan application.
I have a motion made in second to close the hearing for the site plan application. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing, I'll call for the vote on favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no.
And then I make a motion to close the hearing for the special permit for the use.
I have a, I have motion made in second to close the special permit for use. Do I have any further discussions and questions? Hearing, I'll call for the vote, all to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'd make a motion to continue the open hearing, the hearing for the special permit for floodplain to September sixteen.
Yes, September sixteen.
Six thirty?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Second round.
Okay, I have a motion made in seconded to continue the public hearing for special permit floodplain to September sixteen to six thirty. Any questions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries.
The one complication, and maybe someone can advise you on this, is I have to send out notices to the butters about the approval. And we only have one set of envelopes for.
We can provide an extra set.
Special permits? Okay.
Okay.
That's not initially.
He'll take care of that. Okay, fine.
Thanks.
Okay, continued open public meetings for site plan for one nine eight. for one nine eight two oh four Hamilton Street. Map two three six fossils, two and four Metro Platoon lot. Do I have representative Dan?
Email to continue with.
Dan asked, the applicant has sent um an email in front of you dated
Yep.
August sixteenth asking for a continuance, the attorneys are still discussing this issue.
Okay. I have a motion to request to continue.
I'm I move to continue it to September sixteenth at six forty-five.
When's it six thirty, you wanted it when?
Six forty-five.
It's four o'clock.
Oh.
Cause there's a good chance they won't be back.
Yeah.
Alright, that's a good plan, so six six thirty-one.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, that's good, we can always go into the record.
Can just continue to the right push. Okay. Uh motion made and seconded to continue to six thirty-one, uh September sixteenth. Any further discussion, hearing and I'll call for the vote, all say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, motion carries.
Look at that, it's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, I'm back on schedule. Preliminary plan, something there were Bassett Street subdivision. Bassett Street map, three two eight fossils, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty-one, forty-four, forty-eight, fifty-six and fifty-eight.
It's gonna take a few minutes to set up, so be able to include mine.
Okay. Yep.
Do you want to help open up the other side of things?
Just been a while since he's called my house.
That's why they put me here, I guess. That's why they're making me retire.
Yeah.
If I get a sip like this.
Okay, handle some. What's that? Absolutely.
Um, it's not that kind of.
Being well prepared, man.
Thanks, Jimmy, hi.
Is this the same as what we have, or this is all we have?
Well, this is a, everything, you have everything except for a few things.
Okay, so use this one now.
Does anybody need a copy of the plan in front of them?
Okay, good.
A few.
No.
I can see it, really.
I have it, yes.
We got it. All set, John?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, for the record, my name is Jamie Rowan, employed by the firm Haley Ward, former owner of Bigam. And my client this evening was FWC Partnership. And we're here before you this evening because we filed a preliminary subdivision plan on a piece of property off of Bassett Street. So I'll start with a well-known monument in Lomond's to the Il Camino. Everybody knows where that is on Central Street. If you're traveling from the center of Lomond's to heading south on Route twelve or Central Street, right before you get to the Il Camino on the right-hand side, uh Creasy Street, take a right on Creasy and immediately Creasy will fork the entity right, and that's Bassett Street. That Set Street is public up to a certain point, which includes, I believe, three Bassett Street. Half the, half the number three is private all the way. Another landmark that will help you orient where you are, or where the property is is to the left of Bassett Street, we have the ball fields. Uh Lomond's Recreation Park has three or four ball fields. Four.
Three.
Three.
Softball fields.
Yep, and so um young residents and adults uh play softball at night, so it's well-used during the spring, summer and fall. Not so much, I believe, in the winter time. So the property that we're involved in uh proposing the preliminary subdivision plan to go up Bassett Street and it's a ninety-degree turn uh for the layout, but it's a sweeping curve in pavement on the right-hand side or the east side of Bassett Street opposite the ball fields. There's a piece of property we're proposing nine lots. Within Bass Street, Bassett Street itself, we have water, we have sewer, and we have drainage. In the package I gave you, and I'll go over it with you a little bit later, I have photos showing you the condition of Bassett Street all the way through. So that you can see what it looks like today. So they told you we have water, sewer and drainage, so we'll start with the sewer. The sewer uh end ends right about here, right in front of number three. And we're proposing an eight-inch line that's going to extend all the way to the end of Bassett Street. That will serve all the nine homes and be accessible for the Lomond's Recreation Department in the future expansion if they need it. Same thing for water, water ends right about here with a hydrant. And we're going to tap off that existing water main, we're going to extend it eight-inch line all the way to the end and tend it with a hydrant. Again, that'll provide water, domestic use, fire protection for our homes and for any future needs of the ball fields themselves. Um drainage does exist, there's no gurney, but it sheets low all the way to a catch basin that enters this well, wanting to get this system open Bassett Street, Central Street and Creasy Street. One of the things we do always is have a development review board meeting, I call it that, but it's a technical review board meeting in Lomond's stuff. And all the department heads show up, and we did invite the recreation department as well. Um and part of that discussion, uh the Lomond's Rec Department through Joe Poirier said they're going to be putting lights within the ball field, and if we could incorporate underground conduit, when we start developing this, if we could add a few extra underground conduits for the rec department so that they can run their lines and have their lights. We've agreed to that, just so you know. We told them and the development board, we'd be happy to do that. Knowing it's a private road, we're not asking the city to accept it as a public way after it's built. Uh we're going to be proposing homeowners association. And homeowners association that will be lost one two nine. Before this association, we'll give you those documents when we file a definitive plan. And it'll be up to these nine homes to maintain this. Um if there's any repairs that need to be done, any power that needs to be done in the winter, we're taking that off the DPW and putting it on the nine homes as a homeowners association. And that association, those association documents can be approved by the planning board at the end of the definitive stage.
Are you building a road?
So it's interesting, so the road exists.
Cause it, it's a, it's a parking lot.
Yep.
Now.
The the road exists, right, so the road does exist. Um throughout this whole development up to about this point. And at this point, it opens up into a parking lot. Right, which they just paved.
So the road that you're saying is there, that's gonna be privately owned?
Yep.
By this developer?
Well, it's, it's
Owned by the whole city.
It's when, so when you do a subdivision, the end goal is always to do your as will to your bounds and petition the city to accept the road as a public way. We don't have to do that, in this particular case.
Have you been over there?
Yep.
During the softball game?
Yep.
When they're all full?
Yep.
And the cars are parked on both sides, all along the right-hand side?
So along, along the uh west side, all signs, no park, right, so when the development does go in, if it does go in, people are gonna have to reinforce it, uh the signs that they have, right?
Driveways.
Right, so again, I understand it's parked here as well, but they won't be able to park it from the driveway, so it's a problem.
Don't question, so it's public road up until Bassett number three, and it's a private road after that, owned by, owned by whom?
Right. Uh so typically it's owned by your butter on this side and your butter on that side, right, you just set it up.
And how are you, so is the city gonna be part of the homeowners association?
Nope, 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 we're not gonna be asking the city to do this.
And and you need permission from the city to get a utility easement to dig up the street?
Put utilities, no, no. Utility easements are granted within the, within the right-of-way of the paper streets, so.
And you won't be reviving that?
Yeah, but that goes to that area?
What's that?
You won't be reviving that, or you buy houses?
Yes, yeah, yep, so
Okay, you will.
Again, part of the proposal here is to resurface, right? Where the, where the public and
Since it's not a mess.
private begins. And resurface this whole thing, right in front of the building. Absolutely, we're gonna be digging it up for water, digging it up for sewer, digging it up for electric conduit.
You're not gonna have a curb on the outside.
No, we're proposing no curb, no curbs whatsoever, yep. If you take a look at the road now, no curb, if you take a look at Creasy Street, same thing. There's no curves whatsoever, yep.
I just think there maybe should be something separated to parking lot and road.
Yep.
Because they do, they do, they use the whole street. All the whole street, you know. Yeah, I mean, it'll be a you know, it'll, it'll, it'll be an issue.
Yep.
Yeah, the planning.
Yeah, it's a big parking lot.
And the other thing that's gonna be an issue is that's foul ball territory.
That's probably not a way.
Is there a thing of soft, no, it's not.
The house.
This softball's raining down.
The house is up with the cows.
Houses are worth.
And the driveways and on roofs and
For a hundred and twenty, for a hundred, for a hundred and twenty-two.
Foul balls from golf.
My daughter played high school ball there.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I've seen enough.
Zero right hand versus foul ball territory, like, I mean, it's, it's not a problem, but the homeowners will learn.
So one of the waivers will be asking to, you know, to speak afterwards. So typically twelve or more homes. You start to consider what are your options. Under twelve, it's, it certainly is an issue. In fact, Creasy Street is twenty-three homes.
Yeah, what are you gonna have at the end there, sorry?
It blends, it blends right into the parking, um.
Into the parking lot.
Yep, yep, yep.
What? So you're gonna say no parking on the road at all?
Well, right now it says no parking, there are signs right here that says no.
Yeah, but nobody pays attention.
Well, you know, all I can tell you is, is no parking on the side of the road.
So you're gonna put a hydrant at the very end.
Right here, yep.
Can a fire truck go back there and turn around and go back?
Oh yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, cause you go right to the green.
Wait, wait, wait till I show you, wait till I show you the pictures.
Yeah.
Um and and take a look at the pictures, you'll, you'll become obvious, the road is installed. There are utilities there, in fact, there's a snack shack. I'm not quite sure how they get the utilities. The sewer department was here, it's more.
Okay.
Doing some work, so.
Yes.
But.
They, they have, they have a subject, yes.
They might, they might have a subject, but they certainly tied it to water, right?
Yeah.
I don't think they have a well.
It, it might go through to that uh twist, this twist stream.
Amidio.
Yep. So if you'd like, I'll continue, go over the waivers we're looking for, and then I'll go through the packet of information I gave you, page by page, so you fully understand the whole proposal. So part of the, you know, back up a little bit, I'll probably show you uh how many years I've been doing this, but years ago, when you build an unaccepted road, you can be a special project. And the city upgraded their bylaws accordingly and make it a subdivision now, right? So because it's a subdivision, uh we have to ask for waivers in the subdivision control law where we're not. So that's what we're going to be doing with this, this proposal, so part of the waivers we're asking for is a development impact statement, we feel nine homes doesn't warrant it. We're asking for a waiver on sidewalks, why?
You gotta do sideways.
Right now, the way this road is, is built, it's skewed to the right or to the east. And there are improvements that are already made by the ball fields on the west. If a sidewalk is going in on the west side of the ball field side, it's gonna take away from their improvements, don't wanna do that. The sidewalk goes in on the east side or on the development side, it's gonna be located on private property. Right, so could we put a sidewalk in and grant an easement? We could. Doesn't make sense to me, but we, we could certainly do that. The pavement, when it was, when it was paved, it's only a few, two, three feet off of the east sideline of Bassett Street in most cases. So that's a.
So the pavement, the cover of pavement goes almost to easement, the end of, of the uh.
To the right of boy.
To the right of way back.
Yep, yep. Uh Denon roads, right, um in your bylaws, your ordinance, it's five hundred feet. This is about fourteen hundred and forty feet. It's an existing uh layout of Bassett Street on a plan recorded at the registry of deeds back in nineteen fifty. Obviously, we're trying to apply a fifty, nineteen fifty layout to twenty twenty-four regulations, so we have to, we have to have a little common sense about this, if you take a look at Creasy Street, Creasy Street's a cul-de-sac, it's fifteen hundred feet long, it's twenty-three homes though. So we're looking for nine homes, plus one is ten on fourteen hundred and forty feet.
What can make a house so close to the road? The ones in the front.
It, it's a preliminary plan, right, so when it comes right down to it, but just showing.
Cause they, they could be backed up.
They could, they could go back, back from the road.
The ones that are in back, obviously, are.
Yep, yep.
Stormwater.
Again, all we need to do is, is provide, what, twenty feet? Front yard setback twenty, side fifteen and rear thirty, but we could push him back. We could easily push him back.
No, twenty-five off the front?
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty.
Or as I said, yep. Eighty feet of frontage, a hundred feet of lot width and twenty-one, seven, sixty.
You got a hundred feet on that.
Twenty-eighty, seven eighty.
Is this, are we carrying him?
What's that?
Do you need to carry the hundred feet?
No, no. It's one of those things. Maybe the next time you do your zoning changes, maybe you make the lot, where people do the lot frontage, and then you wouldn't have that, right? I know Luke said that many times. And not so much hammerheads, but they look.
Well, and I don't wanna digress too much, but first of all, this is a subdivision.
Right.
So the pork chop lot thing doesn't apply, and the only thing, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the only thing that's precluding you in making nine or ten A and R lots is that you're not on a public plan.
Correct, correct, yep, yep, exactly. Centerline radius will be asking for um a waiver on that. Because it, again, nineteen fifty layout. The width of the street, uh we do have a fifty-foot right-of-way, but the pavement uh varies anywhere from, I think, twenty-seven to thirty-one feet, we would be proposing twenty-eight to have a normal width according to the minor street definition in your regulations. And we're proposing no curbing, there's no reason for curbing code here.
Okay.
But those are the waivers we're asking for.
So twenty-eight feet all the way down?
All the way down, right here, right from here, a consistent paved width of twenty-eight feet, all the way down.
That's more than usual.
Yep, and if there's extra pavement, we throw that on the, the west side, and we'll line it, right? Have a couple, a couple of extra feet. You know, that, that kinda makes sense to me.
The only question I have is, when you're talking about that, is how much foot traffic are we gonna have, do we have kids that walk to the games?
I don't, I don't.
I don't think you get a lot, John.
Probably not that.
No, because what, you gotta come through Audubon behind the fields when you're coming through it. Yeah, that's a tough thing.
Right, Central Street?
Yeah.
Kids walking here.
To your point about sidewalks, though, there are these season, there's dozens and dozens of properties coming along in there. And that's a residential neighborhood. You walk in front of your house, you're walking in the street.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I think well, I think of this, I mean, the traffic, you, you being the ball field and all the rest of that, I think it a sidewalk is almost.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it an option to the board, my, my opinion is we don't need it because of the configuration of Bassett Street, the way it's paved, the way it's skewed as well. However, if the board wants a sidewalk, we'll put a sidewalk in, we're gonna have to grant, we're gonna have to grant an easement on private property.
Right.
Willing to do that, I've already talked about this with the client.
Okay.
So it's not a problem, if you want the sidewalk, we'll throw it on the east side on private property and put an easement, right, for the public.
Right.
Uh but if there's no sidewalk, we'll just end up paving a consistent width off the right-of-way line. We're gonna call it a day.
I don't particularly think we need sidewalks.
Yeah, I don't either.
Well, we'll listen to the audience.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just me.
Yep. And listen to the comments of the departments too, I'm not quite sure if they commented on it or not, but let's go to the packet of information I gave you, we'll go through everything so that
Okay.
you can see what was submitted, you can review it at your leisure, and maybe at the next meeting we'll be all set, or you can revise the plan accordingly, or maybe we're all set tonight. So after Haley Ward's cover letter, you have the director's uh review letter. Like I said in the beginning, um before we submit the preliminary subdivision plan to the planning board, we went through the um technical review board, where all the, the city departments are invited. We did ask that the Lomester Recreation Department be included, they came to the meeting as well to give input, I'm waiting. Before we formulated the plan and submitted to the planning. And you have the minutes of that meeting, there were no fatal flaws that came out of that technical review board meeting whatsoever. Um, just to, uh, emphasize what I said, the Bassett Street layout. Uh, you have the nineteen fifty plan recorded at the registry. And one of the unique things about this property is recently in twenty twenty four, a portion of this property was purchased by the city of Lomester. And the next plan is the plan that, that recorded registry of deeds as referenced in the deed from the city to F W P partnership. The next plan after that, uh, is just an aerial photo that shows the proximity of the ball fields, Bassett Street, and the land to the east of Bassett Street, which is proposed, uh, to be nine lots, single family lots.
Sorry, excuse me, uh, Nathan Milet, the four seven nine Central Street, do you have any more of those?
Yes, excuse me, I'll.
He's just asking for a pack.
Just asking for a pack.
A packet?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, I didn't know there was, uh, pictures in there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, so after the aerial photo, um, that's where you're gonna start seeing the pictures, right? So I'll take you through each photo, so that you fully understand it, and I'll orient you on the, on the plan itself. So the first picture that you see like this is standing here, looking down, looking south on Central. Reason I took that picture is to show you the, um, site distance, right? There's plenty of site distance along Central Street when it comes to the intersection of Creasy and Bassett and Central. Next photo is same vantage point looking north, again, plenty of site distance. And then you can, then you can scroll through the pictures. Um, they're basically taking you through, uh, the fork and then up Bassett Street all the way to the very end. So you can see what kind of condition Bassett Street is in. It's not a, it's not a surface that I would recommend nine lots.
How wide is that street?
Twenty, uh, twenty seven to thirty one feet, paved width, and then the layout is fifty feet wide.
It's just like a standard road.
Standard road.
Ball field already has, Tom, it already has the, pretty, uh, posts in that area.
It wouldn't post, you'll see no, no parking signs or one else.
I would think that's the only place they're looking, April Park is along there. The parking lot at the end, how many cars can fit in that parking lot?
Quite a bit, it's a big lot, and in fact, it was just paved, recently paved.
Yeah, it looks like it was.
Yep.
They're gonna stripe it.
I don't know, they should stripe, but I think they'll get more, more parking. If it's not striped, cars will park, you know, willy nilly and all over the place with other owners.
Right.
Alright, so now that you saw the condition of the roadway, it, it's a paved roadway, it's just not in the condition you wanna put nine homes on.
No.
And that's one of the reasons why, once we resurface it, if it's controlled, the maintenance is controlled by the, the homeowners association, they'll put in money every year to maintain it, right? So it has to be resurfaced, it'll be resurfaced, plowed, et cetera, that should all be taken care of.
But plow will be taken care of by the city.
Nope, it is not, it is not.
No.
I checked, I asked that question, and it is not, so.
They don't plow the ball.
I don't think they plow the ball, because nobody plays in the winter zone, right?
Oh.
Yep.
They create it off.
Yep, I did ask that question, yeah.
They don't have to manage it.
Yeah, well, we will take care of that, and then maybe some land will be accessible. Not, not for nothing, there's a sign here. This is Garrett Forest.
If this house is in, too, it will plow it.
Yep.
Alright, so I, is there a trail there?
That was an Eagle Scout project.
Is that, is there a trail there?
I don't think so.
Trail is going to.
No, there it goes, that's arch, right, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a trail back there, they should tell the guy.
Oh, woods, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so the next, next series of, uh, forms here, you're gonna find, uh, department comments. Uh, they all came in. Um, the first one is the police department, um. Uh, so, police department approved. Fire department, um, fire department had two comments, they see, they need more information. Uh, where will the fire hydrants be located? The fire hydrants are on the plan. Uh, existing fire hydrant here, proposed fire hydrant here, and so they'll, they'll be accessible, uh, to the fire department if necessary. And they wanna know what the turning radius is, and if it's compliant with their code. Um, obviously, we look at, we looked at this, this afternoon with Anthony Cleaves. He took out the, uh, turning radius templates and went through this whole project, and it's in compliance with the turning radius. Uh, the second page, right after the fire department, is the, our plot of showing a fifty, fifty five foot tractor trailer, which is much bigger than the fire, fire truck, and the turning radius is in compliance, there's no issues whatsoever. But we can certainly, uh, certify that when we submit the kind of, that's not a problem. Uh, the assessor approved. Uh, Joe Coria says he's all set, and Joe Coria is the one who made the comments about the underground conduit being added for the ball fields, for their lights. Uh, building inspector approves, no comments. Conservation commission approves, they did have comments. One of the things I didn't mention is, instead of, when you do a development, you typically see detention or retention basins, these big parts. We tried a, a, a little bit more creative way in putting the small detention or stormwater basins on each individual lot. That's what we're going to be doing, so small basins and/or rain gardens, if you will. Uh, we'll take a look at the design criteria when we design it and submit, but there will be small basins on each lot, uh, taking care of the runoff, because all the runoff, once it passes the gutter flow, flows all the way this way. So we'll control it on our own.
Okay. And your homeowners association will have to go and eat that.
Yep, we'll, we'll, we'll have funds to maintain, yep.
Because, yeah. And that's the problem we ran into before.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, board of health approves, uh, there's not much for the board of health to look at because of city water and city sewer. And, uh, the D P W approved with no comments.
And then the planning development director had a memo with some comments, uh, thirteen comments.
So that said, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I didn't read your, your comment letter a little bit, because I thought you would go over with the board.
Okay.
Your, um, your fire department comments and, and your map show the turning radius for the truck to get into the street. Um, this might be a dumb question, normally when we get plans, the truck needs to be able to turn around and get out over here.
Yep, so.
So we're, so we're like, we're parking lot.
We, we didn't, we, yeah, so we did, we did the turning radius here for, this was the more restrictive area, I thought that's what the fire department was talking about. Fifty five foot tractor trailer makes it around, which is much bigger than the fire truck. When you get down here, this is a sea of pavement.
Yeah.
Complete sea of it.
When it's empty.
When it's empty, right, but even if the homes weren't there, and it's a sea of pavement, it's not empty, you still have that same problem.
Yeah, they still have it, you're right.
Right, we can't, we can't solve the, the ball field problem.
Yeah, they have to strike, yeah.
Yeah, but when it's striped, it'll be more efficient, right?
Yeah, when that's striped, we'll have to add twenty four foot, travel away.
They should strike, they'll get more parking.
You should strike it.
Again, if, 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 if the board says to me, uh, go over, do a striking plan, I'm happy to go do a striking plan.
Strike that. Okay.
Yep.
We started to the review.
Okay. Do you have any else?
I don't.
Okay, I'll open it up to the audience, do I have any guests?
Hi, um, Sue Shell, who's from the city council here in Lomester. Um, question for Jean, is that map in this, um, packet?
It is not, but I have a copy.
Okay, good, that would be really helpful. Um, second question, well, the question, is the second map, not the, uh, not the historical map, but then the second map?
Yes.
So, this shows, this shows the map, does it exist today? And if you wanna take a look at it, there is a, and this was in the city council a little while ago, my personal view. And parcel A, if you look, is, is a section of the, is Bassett Street section map, where it looks like a paper street because of plow. And then there are other, um, residential lots kind of lined up on the map. The parcel A, man, they're basically there when it comes up a little bit, um, parallel to Amadeo Drive. That was through the property, and it was called Edward Street. And the person in developer who was owning, thinking, um, who was trying to buy this property to develop, came through the city council and asked the city council to declare, the, actually went to the mayor, excuse me, went to the mayor, asked the mayor to, asked the city council to declare it, um. Yeah, surplus, thank you, I think it was surplus. So anyways, long story short, um, we had a couple of public hearings on that, we had a lot of discussion about that, and Edward Street was ultimately declared surplus by the city council for this. Now, my understanding, sitting through a couple of those meetings, was that, you know, in a proposed development that was yet to be determined, but I was looking at this map, this was what our discussions were based on. My understanding was that, that Edward Street, the, you know, the parcel that we're going to declare a surplus, but it's going to be the entry and exit way for any development in that area. And I was pretty concerned about that because I had three girls play last week. And that last week field, all along Bassett Street, I know it might say no parking, people park there all the time. Little kids, they walk up and down Bassett Street all the time. And they cross the street because they have to, you know, get to whatever field they're going at, there are a number of different fields there. So, the, you know, what you're proposing and the waivers and everything, I mean, I have a lot of questions about, because that was not my understanding. I never in a million years thought that the development would be putting cars or exiting homes onto Bassett Street into that, um, very, very busy area, um, that is the last week, uh, parking area. Because they park all up and down the street, there's a lot of parking you can have, it's not so limited, but, you know, social parking. So I'm just, I'm curious, I guess my first question is, you know, what happened to Edward Street? And why would that have made sense to be the entry or the egress for those nine homes?
Yeah, that's, that's just not the way it was laid out, um, whatsoever, so the, the frontage is off the Bassett Street. Um, for the proposed nine lots. That, that's always been our, that's always been our intent, that's always been our intent.
Okay, well, that was not, I mean, that, that was not part of the submission to the city council, and not.
So this prob.
At all part of the discussion.
Yeah, so this probably wasn't part of the submission to the city council.
It was not, you're absolutely right.
It probably wasn't prepared at that time, right, so.
Well, this was a month or so ago.
Yep.
I mean, it wasn't that long ago, so I, I don't know whether you developed the plan, but the plan is, you know, was presented to us that made sense, I think, to several people in the city council, was that, you know, the egress, the entrance and the egress was gonna be through that paper street, the city was declaring surplus, and the person, the developer who's been buying.
Yep, so I, again, I, I don't know, Peter Camp, Attorney Peter Campabasso made the presentation.
Exactly.
And Peter got all the information from me at Healy Ward, and I never represented that, we were going to be looping a road and, and accessing these lots through, through that network of, 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 of fifty foot strips. We never did, that's all I can tell you. I wasn't part of the city council conversation, which I was, to be honest with you, then I can, I can speak to what's going on, but.
Right, I can say what, what happened. Um, so I have a lot of concerns about this, I, you know, several people here, I know you've had kids play at the last year field. But it is, you know, work, people's of the year, it is a mob scene. And that's because of blocking the traffic, there are a lot of kids that play there, I think some adults have these that play there.
They do.
My daughter in high school played there, so it, there, there's a lot of activity there, and people park on the Bassett Street on that right hand side as you're heading up the fields on the left, they park all up and down there.
Yes.
So, and then they park, you know, every single inch again, because there's just not enough parking, I think, when, when all of the fields are being utilized. So, um, you know, this, don't be more, trying to pull you out into Bassett Street when you've got that street of activity, walking activity, driving activity, um, I think it's just going to present to the world its public safety problem.
Yeah, it's gonna cause a lot of conflict, for sure.
Huge.
Okay, sir. Thank you for your comments. Do I have anyone, anyone else which would like to comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everybody, my name is Noel Jordan, this is my husband Peter Thompson, we actually live on three Bassett. Um, so we're the only house on that street. I did wanna make a few comments just off the cuff as the proposal that's been presented. Absolutely right about parking, it's not just the fields, but mailmen, all the, um, gas company vehicles, everybody parks there for lunch or for whatever else they're doing, they park up that way. Extremely busy, and that second turn, when you're walking back to Central, you can't see any cars. So you really have to be extremely careful, we have dogs, so you walk, walk up and back there. Um, so the visual, when you're walking back to Central, it's really difficult. And when there's a lot of rain, which there has been, and is gonna continue to happen, that street, Bassett down to Central becomes a blur. And it has torn up the road as we know it now, it's totally destroyed it. Um, so now to assume the lead that we have to come here. Um, people may be concerned, Peter, you're well, we own the home at three Bassett, we own it on Bassett Street, and it now abuts two of the proposed lots. We are concerned about the impacts on the development of, um, wildlife. There's a huge cluster of deer that for the past two years run through our property, back through Audubon. Um, owls as well, foxes, all kinds of awesome animal life. Any potential rodents and other vermin that have been pushed into our property because of the development. We would like to request that developers provide a privacy fence installed on our property borders since we have a bunch of the two new lots, this will help ameliorate the loud, disruptive chaos during the months of development, as well as to maintain our privacy after the work of that completion. Please work with us and consider our request, respectfully submit.
Okay, you guys who would, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have anyone else which is a comment?
Oh, here's also.
Okay, ahead.
I just have another quick specific question that occurred to me during this. The way that this, uh, the plowing is done now, we're at three Bassett Street. Um, it goes up all the way into the, um, the plows go all the way down Bassett, turn around and come back. So if this is now gonna be private property, I'm, I'm not clear on how that's gonna work for us. The plow can't just come up and stop and then let back into a driveway and leave. So, can you explain how that will work?
Well, they, they wouldn't do that, they would, they would continuously go up Bassett Street, go around the corner, plow all the way to the end, and then come back out on the other side, so, it'll be all plowed.
It'll, it'll, let, let's put it this way.
That's pretty good.
But my, the general discussion in the city over many, many years, okay. Yeah. A decision was made by the city council and the city many years ago to plow all streets. And that, because, uh, I tend to remember, a long time ago, an incident, where somebody had to get to the hospital and they couldn't because of the street, and it was a private street, they hadn't gotten plowed. So, uh, so the city made a decision that we, even though it's a private street, unless it's, you know, a condo area, the general streets like, like Bassett would, would fall into that category, and they get plowed. Okay, so it's not official, but it's been a condition of the city, the D P W, uh, standard thing for years. So even though it's a private road, and this is not like a closed subdivision where it's private, um, in that case, uh, like we have one that's gonna be up off of Willett Street. It's a single road entrance and it's a loop, that will not get plowed by the city, okay? Because that's all private in the homeowners association. But where it opens up the city property, um, it, you know, they'll, they'll just, my, my feeling is, like, I don't know for sure, is that they'll continue way on through. Yeah. And I hear that general in the corner.
Yeah, Jean Johnson, six Amityo Drive. Um, I haven't heard anything about the co, if the conservation land.
I don't, I don't believe it is. I don't, I don't believe it is.
You know, doing the science, that's.
Oh, over here.
Oh, on the other side?
Over here. Yes, oh, on this side, yes.
Okay. On that side is conservation land. But not on the on the right side of Bassett.
I, okay, I'll I'll go look at the sign again.
Yeah. Yeah, first of all.
Signs are there.
But it went through the conservation commission and they've looked at this already. Okay. Yes. Go ahead, yes, yes, sir.
Oh, I'll, I'll put in some questions, Nathan Miley, four seven nine Central Street, uh, looking at the map. Uh, so these storm basins, um. I imagine it's all going to be, this is all going to be cleared, the woods will be cleared. You put these in, these basins here on the lots. Uh, how will they affect the existing properties?
If they're installed to to protect existing property. Typically, what happens is when you clear cut a piece of property, the runoff increases, right? The volume of runoff increases. So what we do is we put in little depressions to catch that additional volume, hold it back. So that the pre-development rate of runoff and the post-development rate of runoff is equal. So you don't see any more water. You don't see any less, you don't see anymore.
Yeah.
So that's how it, that's how it's balanced.
I'm sure you know, I mean, it's all downhill there, so that's a, that's a concern.
Yep. That's probably doing.
And that was our concern, uh, really is that these, the, the detention ponds, they don't hold water. They they're designed to, you know, the density of all drains out.
For cost.
But it reduces the the flow. But it was also our concern that that the homeowners association in their contract or their their plan, okay? They must have a plan that those are maintained. Okay, so they don't get filled in and, you know, with leaves and brush and things like that. If they maintain, so the the adjacent properties are protected.
So are these, is the plan to clear these lots? Or just enough to build or?
Excuse me?
Is the plan to clear the lots?
Yeah, so in a preliminary subdivision plan, we're showing everything in a general manner. The definitive plans we submit are going to have existing grades, proposed grades. Um, existing tree line, proposed tree line. I can, I can answer those questions much easier when we get to the next step.
Getting closer.
Yep, yep, yep. And I didn't, and I didn't mention going on detention basins or rain gardens. Each lot also has underground stormwater recharge chambers. So all the roof runoff is going to get piped via gutters into the recharge chambers. So that runoff will not make it to anybody's parking.
Okay, uh, just to let you know, this is not the final plan. This is a preliminary plan.
Right.
This gives you everybody an opportunity to speak and if there's anything. And gives them an opportunity to hear from the neighborhood and to bring this this measure so that we can incorporate different things.
Too too early to predict the timeframe, construction?
So my guess is that this will be a late fall, early winter design. And probably a February, March permitting process with the planning board, definitive subdivision. So you're probably looking at late summer, fall of next year, in my opinion.
Adding to, um, Ms. Shawbo talked about, you know, this being a highly congested area during fall season. I mean, I don't, have you been there during game times? So I would, I highly suggest, uh, widen widen the road, you know, and sidewalk.
Yep.
I mean, Mass DOT is working on Central Street, that's going to be all sidewalk.
Yep.
I would definitely, uh, expect more foot traffic and then just the safety measure, you know, for all the ball players.
One of my, yeah, one of my first meetings after we get through the preliminary process is going to be with the rectifier. Help with the develop a sort of, sort of a traffic manager plan for every plant.
Yeah.
Offer a striping plan at the end, see if we can make it more efficient. There are things we can do and help out with, but we can't control the way they use their land. And we, and we certainly have rights to develop our land, so we have to, it's a balance, right?
Is. Right, yeah.
It's a balance.
Yeah. Uh, lots are for sale before construction or houses are going up?
No. Houses go up.
Good, thank you.
Just real quick, what is the elevation difference from the top of the street to the smaller properties?
So, so this is three ninety-four elevation. We're looking at three ninety right here, so four feet. Um. Four oh two. Three ninety-eight, six feet.
But it's not.
Nope. Well, yeah, we have.
Yeah.
Slides, slides down.
It's slow, but it's downhill, yeah.
I just picked two, I just picked two spots.
Right.
Quick question to Mr. Smiley?
What?
Smiley, do you have a water problem now?
Yeah, there's a, there is a water problem.
In the house or backyard?
Yeah, I sell, uh, the runoff, see, now through the yard. It's all coming from the back. I'm looking at, I mean, there's two surrounding the house in this plant. So, yeah, I mean, it is. It's a concern.
Was it, is it because of fall broken or is it because of the slope of the land?
Just the slope of the land, yeah.
Audubon society, I know that's a lot higher.
Well, no, that's a bit of a break.
Uh, no, this is all, this is all, yeah, they're proposed, right?
Well, I know that's.
The runoff, the park, the runoff from the parking lot goes towards those lots.
Right down here, right down.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a little lip here, let's see the kind of.
So it'll actually stop the runoff that's coming.
The runoff, the runoff is going to.
That's coming from the drive, the the road now?
The road, my, my opinion, and I walked it again today, this got to flow along the side of pavement all the way down. And there's a catch basin right here.
So that'll catch some of the flow coming up the parking lot?
Yep, the roadway, absolutely, yep.
Yeah.
And we, we have a choice of of crowning the road, uh, crossloping at the one side or the other. There's, there's all kinds of options we can take a look at to control it much better.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Um, does the plan include resurfacing Bassett Street?
Yes, so.
In it, in its entirety?
It's in entirety, right? So we probably start back here, uh, with private means public. And then resurface the whole thing all the way down. To the point where it meets the parking area of the ball fields, they just paved it, yep.
Do you still have to bring your sword?
Yep, again, just to, just to, just to summarize, sewer all the way through. Water starts here, goes all the way back into the hydrant, yep.
None of the, how much of that exists now? That's those utilities?
Yep, so the sewer ends right here. Water exists up to this point here with a hydrant.
We're just extending.
We're just going to extend it all the way. Water should be eight inch, uh, because it's eight inch here now, sewer's going to be eight inch at a very minimum, yep.
So could his situation get better as a result of the road going in?
So the road's in now, so I don't think.
But it's not.
I don't think the water runoff hits this and jumps the road to go down here.
Right.
I think it better flow down the way down. In a heavy, heavy, heavy rainstorm, it might jump it, go, but we can see if we can provide a bigger berm, absolutely.
But the plan doesn't include any catch basins or?
Yeah, no, no, but but again, this is preliminary, right?
Right.
So.
Might not.
Might not.
With the, sorry, am I still clear to speak?
Sure.
Yeah, yes.
With the, um, the proposed plans here, except they're going to Bassett. Changing the elevation? Or do you see it's kind of staying the same?
Yep, I don't, I don't see it changing too much at all.
Do I have any other questions, sir? Yes.
Hi, Frida, I'm Mrs. City Council. Jamie, maybe I missed it, though, why are you choosing to make this a private way?
So my choice is always to build the road. Petition the city to to accept it and maintain it as a public way. The last subdivision we did with the planning board, I did, or was, I participated in, was off of Main Street, Mary Avenue. And the, then, and the board instantly said to me, we want this to be private, the homeowners association. So I'm just going back on my experience with the board and take it off the city and put it on the homeowners association. I'd be happy to petition the city to accept it, but I don't think that's what the planning board wants.
Well, at some, at some point in time.
Yep.
They come back to us and ask the city to accept the street. Um.
We would, we would be submitting homeowners docs to the planning board for approval and make it a condition of approval.
Yeah, but you're also asking homeowners association to be responsible for the, for the retention, retention part.
Yes, yep.
And we know sometimes that doesn't always work.
Well, at at some point, there has to be some enforcement, right? So.
Well.
It has to be, I think, yep. So I thought I was doing the right thing with the board and the project by, by proposing homeowners.
Yeah.
Homeowners Association, right? So.
It it's, it's really, Kevin, Mr. Rob, it's, it's really up to the the builder, okay?
Yep.
Um. In the case of a, um, private way. Okay, you give the homeowners association and you're your sponsor for the road. And you build your house and, uh, uh, we'll give you, you know, we do the same thing like covenant and stuff like that. The history that we've had with roads coming back to the city and developers finishing their project has been miserable at best. And and a couple of reasons for that we've realized is that we're relying on a certain group to give us a, whoa, a completed road, a completed subdivision. And found that addressed only the, let's say, the pavement of the road. And maybe a correction of the subject or sources. It never included the cost to create a deed compared to the city of that right of way. So what happens, we tend to fall short on on the bonds by substantial amount. So because of that, they didn't get finished. So we have a lot of roads that have never got done because the money that was held in escrow or in a bond uh, was never sufficient to complete the project or complete the paperwork, let's put it that way. We've corrected that now.
Yep.
Okay? So our subdivision, the way we've written our subdivision regulations, we're now a little bit more, more stringent. Uh, we require not only the estimates to have the road built, but also the estimates to have the, let's say, the legal work done. So both is covered. So it leaves it up to, we would prefer in the long run to to see it out of the city streets, okay? And but I think that we've corrected in that, in that ease, you know, in that way. Uh, but if somebody wants to have a public way, but, uh, we also have to see that, uh, I have a question. You know, I, I'm not at ease, I'll put it this way, with what's at nine homes. Uh, being able to, you know, foot the, in twenty years, the the costs to, unless they have a very strong homeowners association, which is not, which is not being good.
Not gonna happen.
Uh, it's not going to happen and they're not going to have the money to fix the road. Because it it just gets.
Or, or, or.
So, but it's an option and we have to offer that option. Okay?
So with with the definitive, we'll, we'll submit pro forma.
Okay.
And the homeowners association, and you guys can review it. If you want to go public, we're happy to go public, if you want to stay private. We have the homeowners association docs and pro forma to show you how it will work.
Okay. Well, probably a lengthy process, you could have petitioned to have the city accept the street now and then put in, as I said before. Ten A and Rs and then your butters wouldn't have any say at all, so this is definitely.
It's the right way to go with.
All right, but a better way to do it.
Yeah, there are, there are options, there are options. Okay, yes.
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate that. I've been on the council for thirty years.
Yep.
And I don't want to tell you how many subdivisions and you all, you've gone through the same thing. It starts off as a private road. Properties turn over, so now you get the fourth, fifth and sixth owner of the house. Who doesn't remember what the agreement was when he first bought the house. So now the street is, is a mess because the homeowners association doesn't have the money to fix it. So then they ask us to accept the road and take it by eminent domain so that we can fix the road because it's a hazardous situation. And that, that class taxpayer money, you know, for other taxpayers who have done it right. So i- if there's an opportunity to to do it the right way to begin with.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, I I don't understand why you'd be talking about a private road and stuff.
I agree.
Yeah.
You know.
I I think that in this situ, especially if you bought a city property here, uh.
Kind of easy one, so I guess that's.
Uh, I think.
The road's already there.
Go public this time?
Yeah, yeah.
No issues at all?
And really, I think that you're coming out of this, I would, I would suggest.
Yep.
So, you, you wanna, I, I continue this until when?
Oh, you can continue it?
What's that? Uh, well, no, this, this doesn't get continued. Okay, because this is only preliminary plan.
They're continuing.
He takes any information, then he'll come in with a definitive. Okay, so all they're doing is gathering information, thanks.
I, so, uh, I have, just before we close, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I know I'm kind of putting you on the spot. I'd be interested to hear your thoughts just at a high level. Um, and I know this doesn't address the Jordan's issue and it doesn't address Mr. Miley's issue. But I feel like the parking problem could be alleviated if we kind of did what Ms. Shawfor suggested and access these lots through the paper roads. And I'd, I'd be interested to know, to to get your high level thoughts, your opinions on the lots. Or whether, if you could get those lots to fit that way.
No.
Short answer.
Too, too expensive as well. Um, in this particular case, we have an existing paper road.
Yeah.
That we can upgrade, make improvements to and resurface.
Okay.
In this particular situation, we'd have to build a road.
Yep.
And the price, we'd have, we'd have to get triple the lots in order to, based upon road costs today, so that, that'll never happen. And that was never the plan to begin.
So ball players parking in in front yards instead of in back yard.
Yep, but what we'll do is, like I said, one of my first meetings after is to meet with.
If there's no, if there's no sidewalk there, people will be in the park or in the front yards.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, you can do your, your driveway and then park.
Sidewalk's imperative.
Yeah, they'll have curb grab, they'll have curb grab for the driveway.
It's the rule, it's a plan that. He's going to work, put together, get with Greg from that.
I think it's.
Yep, yep, one of my first meetings is to meet with the rectifier and go over things, talk about the traffic manager plan. Talk about their scheduling, et cetera, et cetera. And see if we can submit something to the board when we come back for definitive plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I, 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 I was there, it's the second step.
I'm going to see what's at vote, because the vote is there, if you want, you could make this all A and Rs.
Yeah.
Yep.
Motion is made, yeah, do I have a motion to vote here?
It's a, it's a, it's a.
Yes. All approval not required. Elizabeth Sun's off the hall, nobody ever knows any of these developments.
Yeah.
They're doing things the right way.
Okay. Do I have a motion, a vote?
Any good, guys?
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both say no, both say aye, aye.
Is there a vote?
Thank you very much.
Is there a vote of the board to approve the voting, or you're just standing me along the road?
Not yet, not yet, no, you have to wait till later on, then you do that under new business.
Okay.
Yeah, then we just posted, perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jamie.
But it's just.
It's going to come up.
A regular meeting? A clock auto page?
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Wiser. Sal Chakunik. Trevor Tariassar. Tom Gergen.
Here.
Jason Paray. Ian Baurer, excuse, John Souza.
Yeah. Man, it's your previous meeting, June third, two, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Have a motion made, do I have a second to accept the minutes?
Second.
All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Next minute, site plan application for Willard Street. At four nine nine parcel thirty-seven, contractors garages.
Yep, this is two contact traffic garages.
So about September sixteenth at six forty?
Second.
September sixteenth at six forty?
Did someone second that? Yeah.
I have a motion made for September sixteenth at six forty. Do I have any discussion? Your man will call for the vote, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Most say no, motion carries. Site plan application sixty-eight, seventy, seventy-two, Willard Street, map fourteen, parcel nineteen, three to three A. Multi-family residential, a bookful. Multi-family residential, a book's one of the office on fifth floor. This has been continued to September
No, that wasn't very
No, 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 no.
No, no, no.
No, that wasn't very
But that was close though.
That was close.
That was close.
So what are the, as, there waivers on that?
Waiver.
Uh, yes.
Column.
The column?
No.
Um, there were three waivers, section twenty two dash fifty two point three point one for the landscape plan by landscape architect, section twenty two dash fifty two point two point three from providing a throughput clearance from a column maneuvering the aisle or parking space, and section twenty two dash fifty eight point six for ten to eighty.
So I
But we have something pending the the floodplain.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a third.
That's the third one.
Okay.
That's not
So we can
Are there any waivers specific to the flood, while there's
Not yet, that would have to be for the special permits, amended later.
Okay.
That's that's
So I make
So this should be closed to accept it.
I make a motion to accept all three waivers under the site plan.
I'm sorry.
Have a motion made and second to accept the waivers
And again
under the site plan application.
And again, I'm gonna put a no on the parking one, just.
Okay.
So do you wanna take the waivers individually?
It does matter for that one, they're gonna pass me that, so you guys will do this one.
What, you guys want?
I'm just putting on the record.
You're gonna vote differently on one or another.
Yeah, I'm just putting on the record, the reason I'm putting no is because of the parking.
Okay, all all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve.
Special permit.
Um, I think we
Use.
Have to do the use first.
Yeah. That's a special permit use.
Well
Yeah.
Well, we did it backwards here.
Did the site plan first.
I see what you're saying, right.
Do you do site plan first?
Yeah, she just did, you just did site plan, you just did the waivers for site plan, you have to do the site plan.
Okay, do site plan.
I know, but don't we, don't
The use first.
I guess, does it make a difference?
No, I don't think so.
Can approve the site plan and then the, I mean, yeah, I guess we can, because we can be, site plan can be for anything else. So I make a motion to accept, uh, I make a motion to approve the site plan application.
Right.
Sorry.
No, we get site plan.
You did it?
We did the waivers.
And
Oh, just as the, uh, with waivers.
And the standard that they have to like check with you.
Okay, yeah. Motion made, it's second to accept the site plan with waivers. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both say no, motion carries.
Do it with
So I'm, okay.
Special permits.
That's site plan with waivers, right?
Yep.
Special permit for use, for use.
Yep.
For use, special permit for use.
Motion to approve, now we have to do the waivers again.
They have to do the waivers.
Then you with waivers, right?
So so I make a motion to accept the
Oh, if you accept the waivers on the site plan yet.
I think it has to be on both.
Has to be on that.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the waivers under the site plan for use.
With waivers.
Sorry, second, second.
So motion made and second to accept the site plan with use?
For the se- for the special permit.
For special permit. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both say no, motion carries.
I make a motion to
Okay, continue.
I I make a motion to issue the special permit for the use of the property.
Second.
Have a motion made and second to accept the special permit use with the waivers. Any discussion? Hearing and call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both say no. Motion carries. Continue open publishing of special permit in the floodplain. This has been continued to September sixteenth at six thirty. Okay?
Chris, at that times?
Six forty five Hamilton Street has been continued to six, September sixteenth to six thirty one. Preliminary site plan subdivision, uh, Bass- Bassett Street subdivision, Bassett Street map three two eight, parcel thirty seven, thirty nine, forty one, forty four, forty eight, fifty six to fifty eight. Uh, this is a preliminary plan, there was quite a bit of input here, I wanna thank everybody for the and the neighbors for their their input and uh I I think we're, as a preliminary, so we'll accept it.
Well, I think we still have to vote on it.
And with uh Yeah, yeah, motion would be to accept with uh recommendations.
Well, we
What's the, what what recommendations you have?
But we have wa- don't we have to accept the waivers too?
No.
No.
We don't have to consider the waivers?
Those are gonna be the waivers for the um
Well, they could change, they could change.
Well, we can make, well, let's put it this way, we can, we can list things that we we want, okay? Like I said, Chris was the one to be a public way.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay. Uh, that the uh, to a public way. Second, we, yeah, whether we wanna a a sidewalk along.
Those are the two that's allowed.
Well, there's a wave, those don't, we have to wave.
Okay.
I think there should be a sidewalk.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and and that's a
I'm after really
We should ask for the for the traffic mitigation plan to be worked with the rec.
Yeah. Yeah, but what we're saying is, at this point, it's a recommendation.
Well, thanks, only because I'm landlocked.
Yeah.
Um the, that the uh program be developed with the uh con- with the recreation department uh for the operation uh of the
The traffic we
Uh
Develop traffic ma- management and coordination with the rec department?
Yeah, exactly.
I I just need to check something.
Obviously, it's a waiver related.
Sure, the wa- maybe that's, these are requests.
These aren't waivers, these are all suggestions at this point.
Yeah, talking to the butters, I know that there was
Right, any any other comments that were made by your butters that may be taken into consideration?
Anything specifically?
Yeah, how is the rec department qualified to negotiate and manage traffic?
Well, I I mean, they they would offer to strike the parking lot, for example, now you have a aligned uh
No, no, they were
way, you know, you have marked lanes, you have marked parking spots, it's not just a three open uh space. So that would, that would be good for everything.
I mean, you're, nothing, nothing's gonna At first, nothing's gonna fit, so the people are accustomed to the
Right.
Yeah, all it is, is a general recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all, that's all these are, is generalities.
Right.
These are things that we've looked at, uh, consider these. That's all it is, that when they get into the definitive and they've looked at the considerations, then we take a vote, you know, a hot vote.
So maybe some, a privacy fence, and it maybe, there's a butters that are gonna be possibly more affected by
Right. Yeah.
how it all lays out, and others
You you talked about
Privacy fence for everybody or just for the
I don't know, for everybody or the
Come on, this is all preliminary, let's
Well, that helps, it's, you know
Again, there might be different the way things are.
For the butters, hello.
Might be different for the butters, another couple of
Or they may have to protect, you know, from the kids walking back and forth too.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, you know, maybe you take and put a a chain, a fence or something along that side to to protect the fly walls that, you know, in front of your house.
The fly balls.
Yeah, across the street.
Are you serious about that?
Or
Up front of the house, and
Yes, of course.
It's a construction area, if it becomes a construction area, they're gonna do something to guarantee the safety of the kids.
Fence to protect against fly balls?
You know, Jamie, you know what I'm saying. I mean, you're gonna rope it off, you're gonna chain it off, you're gonna fence it off during construction if it's a goal. Uh, keep the kids out of there.
My experience, my my experience with with fly balls.
Not fly balls, not the, no, I'm talking about the the kid traffic.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, so that, so again.
No, how do you protect it from the construction?
I offered, I offered to meet with the rec department.
Yep.
I extended an invitation to the council, is the need of us as well, so it's transparent, right?
Yep.
We that's
And we're gonna get together and we're gonna talk about traffic management, whether it's striding, moving aisles, turnaround areas, crosswalks, sidewalk.
Like the checking during construction for the kids?
We can, we can follow, everything's on the table, so
Yeah.
we'll have that conversation with them, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
So it's all open, that's what I'm trying to say, it's it's a it's an opportunity opportunity for the neighbors to
There's other things that fall on play.
input.
Any other considerations?
What I like to say is people have the right, we have in the city, we have a situation that we have a problem with, we don't have enough houses. So, and people have the right to develop their property. So what we try to do is mitigate it the best we can uh to help everybody uh to be successful. Okay? The motion, I think, I think we discussed this, would be in order to close the preliminary hearing.
Hi.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
We did, we closed it.
No, we did, we okay. Okay, kinda slow.
So are we
Wait a minute, yeah, aren't we on the line out of the vote?
Are we voting on waivers?
No, we're trying to It's new business, it's new plan, it's new
No, no waivers.
There's three waivers, but
We're just giving
They're for the final.
That's right.
Now we are, and
Okay.
Because
We should just
Uh, do we need to vote on the waivers?
I'm checking the, under the, it says, um
So, if I may.
I
It's okay?
Yep.
Yes.
So, the advantage in discussing and voting for the waivers is it gives us an opportunity to design towards that. Right? So if you tell me, um, you're not gonna grant the waiver with respect to the center line of the paved way that has to correspond to the center line of the right of way, then I know I have to redesign everything, push it all over to the rec department and it's gonna disturb some of their improvements, don't wanna do that. So, in my opinion, if you vote on the waivers now, we can design it correctly. Um, we don't have to vote for revision, so, my opinion.
He has, he has a list of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight waivers. It is now dated July tenth. I didn't list, I only have three listed, he has more listed.
Yeah. No, it should be on the cover page, yeah.
July tenth.
Okay, yes, of course.
You want, we're gonna vote on the second, we should, you know, you wanna
Well, so I
Well, okay, here's the, uh, the Chris won't be, um the government impact statement. Um, it's only seven houses.
That's section seven point one point B, point one thirty.
So, I second pause motion.
No, was that?
To approve that way.
To approve.
Approve it. Now, the motion made and second to approve development impact. Not to have it. Except the waiver. A motion to do that. Any discussion?
We're we're waiving the impact.
Yes.
Right.
One, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Both say no, that move carries. Uh, section nine H, two minus streets shall be provided with sidewalks on one side only.
No, you can divide the way of the
Second. Correct.
I have a motion made and second to deny that waiver. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of denying the waiver, say say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, deny.
May I make my comment? So if if people go for sidewalk and I represented to the board that the sidewalk basically go on private property with an easement, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, section nine R three, deadhead streets shall not be longer than five hundred feet unless in the opinion of the board, is greater length than necessitated by topography or other local conditions.
I'd look to grant that waiver.
A motion made
Second.
It's all there.
Is made to grant that with them. Okay, any discussion? Hearing and call for all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that carries.
I don't necessarily, can I just make one, I don't necessarily know that these are that these are, um
I'm fast.
binding, right?
Correct.
No, the recommendations are all recommendations.
You come back and you come back and you explain and
You're gonna, you're gonna see a design.
Right, and if you said, I tried to do the sidewalk and this is
Right, these are all recommendations.
Okay.
Okay, section nine R three D, deadhead streets shall be provided at the close end with a turnaround, having outside diameter at least one hundred feet and the property line diameter one twenty. Okay, it's no turnaround because we have the parking lot.
Move to approve that way.
Second.
Approve.
I have a motion made and second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
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 Section nine R four, the minimum center center line radius of the cur- curved street shall not be less than the following minus streets, hundred fifty feet. Since the Bassett Street way has a ninety degree corner with a center line radius of about fifty five feet. Um, yeah, well, you didn't lay, the layout with the truck, so that would exist is okay.
Second.
So motion to accept, approve. Any discussion? Hearing and call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Section nine R seven, the center line of this roadway shall coincide with the center line of the street right of way, existing Bassett Street right of way, some like to not see coincide with the existing roadway center line. Uh, that's way with the center line would have to allow remove
So you're saying it's offset with the current?
Right.
Yeah.
We're gonna maintain that offset.
Okay.
I I approve to accept the waiver.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
Motion made and second to approve, any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Section nine R twelve, the width of the street right of way and travelway shall not be less than the falling wider streets right of way fifty feet, travelway thirty four feet. Just in Bassett Street varies from twenty eight, uh, twenty seven to about thirty one feet. I think this one we had recommended twenty eight feet.
Twenty eight, right, instead of thirty four.
That's my recommendation.
So, well, it's not, like, that's a good, no, it's like that a lot of the same, no, it's a good, twenty eight feet is good.
Yeah. That's what we've done.
It's not a lot of the same, no.
Yeah, that's pretty much what we used. So a recommendation would
We will, we have to change that, I mean, just, we'll make the recommendation based on a twenty eight foot
Yeah.
travelway.
I have a motion made and second for a twenty eight foot travelway. Any addition, okay, any questions? Hearing and call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, approve. Twenty eight feet. Uh, curbing shall be installed on the edge of each roadway and all streets, no curving, just on Bassett Street. Well, with the sidewalk, you're gonna get ended up with the curbing on one side anyway.
On the right side.
On the right side, so
So I make a motion to deny.
So a motion made and second to deny?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody, everybody.
Alright, well, and then I make a motion to approve the uh preliminary subdivision plan.
So Okay, I have a motion made and second to approve the preliminary subdivision with
Can I just make sure I have all the conditions and I read them off?
Please.
Sidewalks are needed, the board prefers a public way. Develop traffic management and coordination with the rec department.
Yeah. Right.
Add a privacy fence for three Bassett Street of butters. And provide safety netting or fence to protect against fly balls.
Well, not
No, that was
Fly balls. I thought we were gonna provide construction fence and so the kids can't get into the construction area and go to build.
Yeah, that's that, that'd be something.
It's too different.
I have all the waivers.
Yeah.
No difference.
You got all, yeah, we're okay.
So you want the safety net for the fence to protect against fly balls?
Uh, no, no.
Probably true.
Well, that's something we can talk about in the
Okay.
Let's get nets, let's get netting.
Okay, ready?
Alright.
There was only one deal with that.
There was a notion, there was a second.
What's that?
There was a notion, there was a second.
Yeah.
Yes.
John, you need to call for a
Yes, I did. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I did.
Oh.
Thought I did.
Okay, I guess I interrupted.
Okay, I'm not
All approved.
I'll say
Yes. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, sweetie.
Congratulations.
Jamie, they're, they just gonna do it smart. They're gonna work with the other people and do it smart.
All vote, all vote, it all, I want it, sir, and uh, yes.
Okay, good.
Happy retirement.
Good luck out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
All business, site plan application, uh, sixty eight, seventy, seventy two, Pluto Street, map fourteen, Bassett
We already did that, John.
Yeah.
We're on the communications.
That's okay.
Six point
Six point one.
Yeah.
Oh, I did that, yeah, I was doing Home page. Uh
Six point one? Six point one communication.
Communication, modification of the sum of the states, map, uh, four twenty three, that's three parcels, eleven thirty three.
This one, um
Vote to make a determination of teaching minor, major or minor line creation, vote of This is a
This one
This will be continued?
Yeah, the applicant has provided a legal memo from legal counsel
Right.
and our legal counsel wants to respond. And our legal counsel has to do more research, it came, got the memo from the applicant, came on Friday.
Yep.
And we got it to legal counsel on Friday, but a two day turnaround, less than a two day turnaround wasn't possible for our lawyers.
I I moved to put this under communications on September sixteenth.
There you go.
Second.
Motion made, it's taken and to move to communication on September sixteenth. Modification of the site plan of six seventy central street, map five eight two, parcels eighteen to nineteen. Vote to make determinate, if deemed minor or major modification and double vote accordingly. Okay.
I guess we need
We have, Mr. Anderson to speak then.
Yes, did you wanna speak then? On behalf of this?
Yes, please. Um, I hear Chris Anderson, Henry, and Harry. So we're here uh tonight to see if we can get a minor modification made to this existing site plan approval for the six seventy central street project. Uh, the board might remember this was a uh repair facility and a trucking transportation facility. Um, the uh landowners are looking to modify the plan to account for an additional use as a used car dealership. Uh at this point in time, we've been before the ZBA, uh they did grant us a special permit for the physical use as a uh used car dealership. Uh and we've also gone to the license commission and given our blessing um.
And for how many cars?
Uh for at this point in time, it's only gonna be ten display case on cars with a potential five in the future if the license commission seems appropriate. Um so we submitted the plans, uh demarcated the uh display cases as were approved by the uh ZBA. Because of the generally small nature of uh the use on this property and a car dealership generate a significant amount of traffic on this small of a scale, uh we figuring this would be uh deemed more of a minor modification rather than a full fledged major modification. The site is pretty much built out, striped, done everything, uh ground is performing and trees are planted, uh so at this point in time, the site's fully operational. Uh minus the uh modification requirement for the uh dealership.
I wanna say something here, I not I don't speak up that.
No, you don't say.
Well, in opposition.
This is why it's opposite.
Okay, I have I I have I have an issue here. Couple and they here. When you came in two years ago and we granted all kinds of waivers and said this was not gonna be was not planned and the question was asked by myself at the meeting if he had any intention of selling cars. And the answer was no. Now, we didn't put that that's in the minutes and that that is in and then we had a copy, so we have it is documented, okay. What's happened now? You didn't come back to the planning board there, we'd like to make the change. Went to the ZBA.
He's doing that now.
To get a waiver. You went, let me finish. Went to the ZBA to get a waiver, went to the license commission to get a license, okay. On a piece of land, on a property that you had already told us that you weren't gonna do that. And I don't appreciate it. Okay.
How many cars?
In this case, only ten cars. We've gotten a feedback, we waived sidewalks. We waived a lot of stuff on the property. Now, I wanna commend you and what you've done is very nice. And I've referred some people to look at your property and say, look at the night job the D people did. Okay, but now we've changed the situation. We're gonna need sidewalks. The police department wants a full traffic study. That's their recommendation. Okay. Because of they're saying now there's gonna be traffic that needs a sidewalk, there are gonna be pedestrians walking, looking at cars. And with no sidewalk, it's a problem. So that comes from that comes from the police department. So I'm just telling you right upfront is my recommendation is the the major modification. When they come back, then all of everything has had to be done properly. And that's my say.
Are there sidewalks anywhere on this side?
Yes, sidewalks come right up though from the gas station.
From the gas station here?
Yeah.
This is there. So on this plane, where where are the spots for the car facility?
So the display cases kind of spaces would be immediately along Central Street. There's a bay of different front.
So right here. Where it says landscape tree, correct.
Where's where the landscaping is, correct.
And yeah, where are the the customers, where are the car browsers gonna park?
So I may approach.
Yep, yeah.
So we have our display cases on the front portion of the site. We have an additional eight spaces along the page west or east side. Those are dedicated pretty much to uh visitors and everybody back. We have an additional six spaces right against the front of the building with the accessible spots. So that can also be used as uh visitor spaces. And then we have additional employee parking in the back. So we have quite a few spaces dedicated to employee and um visitors and all that kind of fun stuff. Now, the special permit, we went, we for full disclosure on the process by which we went, it's because we wanted to make sure that the ZBA would grant us the use because the use falls under a ZBA's approval. We went to the for the ZBA before we came to the board because there would be no point of us coming to the board, we wouldn't ever gonna get the use. So not trying to hide anything, not trying to sneak anything past anybody, that's the route we went. Um obviously, we had to go to the license commission because that's.
As the rule.
That's the rule. They have to make a determination of yes or no or maybe so.
Oh. Right.
So that's how we went that route. We didn't request any waivers from ZBA, it was straight use only. They granted it, um we met all the requirements, they liked the fact that we are secluded, we defense the entire area, it's landscape, it's not your stereotypical used car dealership, you're staying outside the street. So that's the rule we went. Um and during our tech review meeting, we did review with uh police department. The issue is with this kind of development, it's incredibly small. It's only ten uh dealership spaces. And the IT manuals, the traffic stuff that we use on a day to day basis, doesn't even quantify this as a potential use, so the traffic assessment is very difficult. Um the site layout is designed that we are separating the used car dealership being in the front primarily the front portion of the site from the through traffic going into the rear portion of the site where all the repairs and other large vehicles are stored. So we're separating everything um to try to mitigate and separate the pedestrian versus uh vehicle traffic as much as possible. Now, we requested the waiver for the sidewalk connecting the building to the site because this is a very vehicular centric use. Nobody's walking in to repair a vehicle or buy a vehicle or sell a vehicle on a regular basis by foot. It's always by vehicle traffic. Um so we're held to to the original content and we we requested a uh password back then. We're still meeting or we feel we're still in that line of conversation. Um the traffic assessment uh we can provide uh to the board if deemed necessary, it's uh it's gonna be pretty much the same uh memo that we provided before with a little bit further description modification of the trips, but at the end of the day um the trips generated from this property are moderately insignificant compared to the actual flow of Sunday street. And from vehicular access point, this has gone before DOT for a large trailer vehicle. So the improvements along Central Street are not gonna change, the radiuses are the radiuses. Um because a used car dealership doesn't create any large vehicle demand beyond what the truck the depot facility already does.
I'll just read what the police department did. There'd be a significant change in the use from a traffic perspective. The original plan, there's a minor traffic trips from transport vehicle a few times a day. Adding a dealership means customer traffic as well as roadside distractions due to signs and other sales materials that attract attention. I request a new traffic study. See attached.
How how many lots did he uh the license was for ten?
Yeah, ten initially with a five in the future, everything goes well and nothing crazy happening on the line.
Ten.
And how long for for you know the others, I mean, we've had problems on that street before where, you know, they had a five car license or ten car licenses. All of a sudden, it's twenty twenty five cars. And then you packed across, I mean, you had this issue on Central Street.
Yeah.
You know, you know, I know.
All with discussion, wait a minute, wait a minute, all with discussion is what we did, this is a major or a modification?
Well, that's right, and so in at at first, I considered this to be a major modification, but now that I understand the whole process just because
Right.
the 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 owners said in the site, in the in the original permitting process before us, that they weren't going to put in uh uh used car sales, that that to me means we're not gonna do it illegally, so they did it the right way. They went to the licensing commission, they went to the ZBA, they it's not for us to determine what type of use it is in this particular situation. So he did that and I you know frankly, I don't I don't really agree with um the police department, because do they know it's only for ten cars?
Well, that's what I wonder. I wonder if.
Yeah.
Any amount of traffic for ten cars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, you might have five cars going, look at my cars.
I don't know. I mean, I didn't uh I don't know, I don't know what was given to the uh yeah, we give it to ten cars to the police department.
There's not a hundred cars.
It was. It was given for ten cars. They call it.
Yeah, so they have to regulate, license commission has to regulate.
It's gonna.
I mean, I I I'm I'm so tired of them saying, oh, remember this, these people who did it this way, remember that, and then all of a sudden, there's twenty five cars there.
Well, not regulating the car.
They're not all those other people.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
And the license commission, that's good.
I'm saying this, you know, we want to do it.
The license commission doesn't watch that in ours.
Yeah, the license commission has to watch ours, honestly, that's why.
Oh, yeah.
So they have twenty guys there.
My first question was to go to the license.
The minor the minor the sign what 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 the condition comes down to is
That was important, that's good. Cause we had a lot of people not doing it.
Not that we accept, what I'm saying is does the question comes up is the sidewalk, okay, really comes up to a sidewalk in in that in that area, which we waived it the last time.
And I honestly think we could re-again.
So I mean, that's.
Well, I don't, I think we need to.
I do, I do.
Do we. You got that whole open area there, like, yes, well, you need a sidewalk.
No one is walking there.
They're not walking.
Yeah, I don't get it, except the, yeah, I guess I read what the police department.
No, no, I know, I know, I don't know.
I don't really.
Well, they want a traffic study, they ask me for a sidewalk too.
Well, that looks, I don't know.
I mean, but it doesn't make sense.
I think they did a nice job developing this piece of property and they wanna add a little bit of income with used cars.
Yeah. Yeah.
So be it.
So is I imagine how the conversation went, let's let's get this truck terminal approved and and we'll deal with our lot now.
I mean, they're.
Oh, the truck lot's already been approved.
Oh, there's nothing wrong with that. Right, there's nothing wrong with that.
So that's already been done, so the only um additional use that's being added on to it was this used car dealership, which the ZBA granted.
Right.
So we're before the board for the modification of the site plan because we changed the location of the parking configuration.
And the use.
Um to your point about sidewalks, I support that. We've got the condos down the street. We've got the corner stores at the gas stations, we keep our walks down the street to go to the store and get a soda.
Right. Right.
I'm I'm in favor of.
So the sidewalk against the street will remain and DOT is coming in the next month or year or so to do all that work.
Right.
So that will be put.
Will be a sidewalk.
There will be a sidewalk in front of the property, no question about it.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, well, that's.
Just like there was up uh.
So the waiver was requested to prevent or not to allow or construct the sidewalk from the development to the road because there's no real pedestrian traffic.
How how far, I thought there was stuff in that uh Lang Castle Street.
No.
Talking Sterling.
It's going to Sterling.
Yeah, Sterling to Lang Castle Street, wasn't it?
No, Lang Sterling Town Line to Tucker's.
To where?
Yeah. Tunnels.
All the way.
How far, how far down?
All the way past.
All the way down to Tucker's.
Because.
All the way down to, oh, Tucker, okay.
That's where the sidewalk is.
That's where the sidewalk is.
Okay, yeah.
Chuckback goes down it, so.
Okay.
So that's part of the actual DOT permit and we went back and forth with DOT quite a bit because they're trying to get their stuff squared away and we're trying to get our stuff squared away. The sidewalk will be going in when.
So to deal, they have to put in a sidewalk.
They will be putting in a sidewalk.
Okay, well, that that changes the.
So that, to me, that sounds like it it could be a minor modification.
Yeah.
We're not talking about a lot.
Is that, is that a motion, make a motion?
That's a motion.
Say it.
There you go.
If you wanna do a traffic study, why don't they put the rotary on the Litchfield Street? Because then then you'll have traffic that really like.
Another one.
Yeah, right.
Don't do it.
Well, the traffic study is, you know, with all that's gonna happen, I I just
What are the ramifications?
The traffic study would be, you know, anybody.
What's the major versus minor on this?
It's minor, they should have these schedules.
We only pay a dollar.
It would be submitted.
We do everything.
It would have to be.
That enough September sixteenth or anything.
It had to come a new hearing, new site plan.
Site plan.
But I need to.
This is just a little.
Then we've already approved.
For ten used cars.
Have we?
Yeah.
So we have, no, we have a motion, we have a second.
Motion and second on the table to approve.
Yeah.
Right.
A motion made in a second, any further discussion to approve it as a minor modification. All in favor say aye.
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 All say no, motion carries.
Good luck.
But though it was made to be determined a minor modification, now you have to, don't you have to nail that or it's a minor.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to vote. That is a minor modification.
You already did that, now you have to go.
No, we made that, so I make a motion to approve.
We.
So approve.
A modification.
Up the site plan.
Okay. Set the set plan.
Fairly conditions.
No.
Just the standard.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, the standard would include the traffic.
Well. With the.
Planning the development director, no, the planning development director has to
Right.
Ensure all conditions of the met prior to six twenty three lock.
Yeah, it will.
You got it.
Yeah, yep.
There we have.
Alright. Motion and a second.
Motion made in second.
All in favor.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no.
Good luck again.
Here.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you for the night.
Support you over roller street, but.
Nice job, man.
Huh?
Hope you get maybe for roller street.
Maybe. Maybe.
Uh.
Maybe.
Well, you have to.
Okay, six point three request for bond offer metal lands that's been continued. Are they they asked for a continuation?
For roller street.
They have?
Yeah.
Request for bond amount?
No, they didn't ask for, that was some of that states.
No, 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 they didn't.
That's wrong.
Uh wrong one, okay. Metal lands at Willard, definitive map lots thirty eight B B lot one. I oh, on this one here. We have, we have to get the the estimate.
Wait, you have to read it, John.
Okay, press for bond amount, metal lands at Willard Street, definitive subdivision map thirty eight B thirty eight uh three B lot one map three ninety eight dash three lot two map three ninety eight dash three lot three map three ninety eight three lots eighteen map three ninety eight three lot nineteen map three ninety eight nine lot twenty, map three ninety eight lot three lot twenty one map three ninety eight three lot twenty two map three ninety eight three lot twenty six map three ninety eight three. Okay, now that I I I think this is an error. Okay, because the with the review report, the step that's right to move forwards and the bond amount, we don't do a bond at this time. Because the these are, this is only, this is like what we had to do is on the original plan to consider this as, this is phase one. Okay, and we'd say it was phase one because the remaining lots substantially cover the cost of the completion of the project. So a bond is not required at this time. So all we what we do is what we can do is just come in for a request for a release of covenant on these lots. Because the because all we're doing is trying to make sure there's sufficient equity left on the project. Now, I could ask for a bond, but the bond is never not gonna cover the whole whole subdivision.
But we still need an estimate from a consultant engineer to say how much it's gonna cost the dealership.
Well, we're not gonna need, right now, it's all we, not at this time, when we go, when we leave phase two
But if we if we're.
and the balance of the the lots, at that point, I need an estimate.
But how are we, how do we release lots if we don't know the value of the cost of the.
Okay, for the board.
Yeah, so you release the lots, but we need to set up a bond first so that if the developer goes under, you guys have the ability to go in and just
Take it for pictures.
and get it done with, yeah, so that's what the vote for the bond is, not the lease.
Sure.
Well.
And then you won't release the lots until later.
Yeah, we we maybe we we have a we have a bond estimate now from your from you guys, okay?
Well, from, yeah, from.
But we will have to get our own blocks, I'm not saying this.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, yeah.
And we can do it both ways, but because we the the bond is only for the phase one.
So do you need a motion for us to get an estimate, is that what you're looking for?
I don't.
I think so.
Yeah, but I think.
Well, with.
What I'm what I'm saying is, I don't I don't think I, at this time I'm not, I don't think I need, all I gotta do is what I'm saying is the remaining, this is what ten lots.
There's twenty seven lots.
There's a total of twenty seven. So I have still, I still have seventeen lots.
Yeah.
In my hand. The value of that seventeen lots outweighs the value of the the ten lots.
I would agree, sometimes you need to make sure that the bond amount, what we're saying it's gonna cost, say, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but say it's five hundred grand to finish the program.
Okay. Yeah.
You gotta make sure that my number makes sense to DPW and everybody else. So I think what we're really trying to do is just get the bond reviewed, make sure we're all in agreement, you know, for it to get released, that's.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can do that, let me get the bond and say, well, this, but also separately from that if you're in a situation and and the DPW says your road is done in that area, okay, we can start releasing lots. is done in that area, okay, we can start releasing lots under a standard form of covenant. Okay, and that that's just a single meeting, comes under communication. What I'm saying is the bond is the the final bond, when we get into phase two, let's call it now, then I'll need a bond and the bond will actually have to be issued and held by the by the city.
So, whatever point you wanna do it, we need a law, we need somebody to give us an estimate of what the bonds have.
But, yeah. We need an. Yes.
Well, we have their estimate, don't we?
Yeah, we need our own estimate.
I wanna say that, I'm not, no, it's we, that can, that process can go forward at this point, and we could.
We need. So.
Sometimes we could make a motion.
I I.
But they can release, we can release lots.
So I make a motion, we we hire whoever.
Step, I wanna hear what Steph has to say.
We we.
Let's step the next stage. I just would like Elizabeth to explain what actually happened because um the applicant came in and made a request, like you can go over all the details and then you work with John to come up with a list of things that we should be doing and now I'm actually, I'm personally confused cause I'm not sure if all these steps are incorrect now, and this was already sent to the um Linda Fosili, so I I just wanna know where we stand on what we need to do right now from our perspective.
Well, what?
So I, do you wanna explain what Linda sent in? Linda has a letter dated August ninth and it's in in front of the board for a request for a road bond.
Uh huh.
And then she included the engineer estimate for the cost to complete the road.
And then you work for John to come up with a.
And then John and I sat down.
We sat down and.
And we wrote a memo dated August fifteenth for the steps that need to be taken.
And that that's.
And that's in front of you.
And that, it's step one, it says, the city requires the city designation here to verify the amount and increase the estimate, so.
It is. That's great.
We don't do I do.
I make a motion that we do that.
We don't do it, I second that motion, cause we don't did anywhere else until we do that.
Yeah. Get that into me.
We need to know if that value is correct and if it is still.
Well, it is, it is correct, but there's also.
But it's from the engineering firm.
It's from their firm, it's from them.
It's from.
From their firm.
We need our own.
That's right, we have to have a review to make sure it's correct by our.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing here, and that would predicate anything else that happens after.
And and I don't know if we wanna go ahead and go to the um our go to, Vanessa and Associates and see if they have an amount less than what we need to do for purchasing agent instead of getting three quotes.
Sure.
Cause the board didn't previously agree that I could go to them.
That's motion.
Yeah, we.
You you make that turn of motion.
Add that to the motion. I second what number pause motion was. Whatever, that's up to you.
It's just that we do number one and never.
Right. And then we go.
Well, we're doing number one.
And we.
Yeah.
But when I tell them at the same time.
We getting designated engineer to verify the report and ask for help.
No, we get it, we wanna get the ball rolling.
You. You get the, uh, there's two things are gonna happen. You're gonna start working that that bond, but at the same time, you don't have to have that completed
Right, you got a motion.
before you ask for a release
Yeah.
of lots.
With still more. Got a lot more.
Okay. So I have to.
I'm gonna, so we want, we want to authorize.
I have a.
To authorize to bring the. Unless it's.
And then they can.
Number one, right. The city's designated engineer to verify the submitted, pretend, set up an escrow account and wire to cover the expenses.
Right.
That's it. Right.
Second, so.
Motion made in second.
I would say.
We.
It should be go, so, well, third quadruple, we just gotta go.
So we're.
Motion made, is all in favor, say aye, most say no, motion carries.
Do the first step.
Aye.
Alright.
Cause then everything else counts a lot, right?
Okay. Six point four, city council petition, forty eight dash twenty four, Elizabeth Wood, planning development director. We have the planning board limits to mass request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to uses. Not listed on the table is the original petition request came from the building commissioner Peter Neal. Boards to schedule for public hearing, city council accept the review on eight twenty six. Okay? And what we got back from them, and what we found was, this already exists in our subdivision regulations.
In the flow chart.
On the flow chart of page thirty two.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're good.
Alright, good, cause I was gonna say, I'm I'm not, I don't know how we can amend something that doesn't exist.
Okay.
Problem. Right. I I know that was a problem either.
What I'm saying is, I I I think we, I I'm sort of in the quandary in this one. We we still gotta, because it came to us from the city council, we have to have a hearing and then go back to them and say.
No, we don't.
I don't think so.
We can just send a message back to them, seeing this, it's not, it's just, it's not necessary, this already exists, please see this, this and this.
It's not necessary.
Okay, we don't think we need a hearing, but we'll just.
Right.
Who knows?
I'm not.
Some of it isn't.
It it currently exists on page thirty two in the flow chart.
So I make a, I make a motion to authorize the planning department to notify the city council that no action needs to be taken.
Right?
And and you know, it's pointing, it already exists, here it is.
Okay, give me their reasons again.
Because, it are, because it already exists within the ordinance.
And it and it exists on page thirty two.
On page thirty two.
Yes.
There we go.
Okay, motion made in second, any further discretion, here now to call for the vote, on favor say aye, most say no, motion carries.
Aye.
City council petition five dash two five, Elizabeth Wood, planning development director on behalf of the city of the planning board zoning amendment dimensional requirements for residential B residential C districts. Boards of planning, we have to have a hearing for this.
No, one thing is, can I just point out one thing? There was another zoning amendment that about upper story dwelling units that the board also moved forward, but just due to the lack of staffing in the clerk's office they're out, their clerk is not there yet until tomorrow, and then the other clerk was on vacation, the assistant clerk. This didn't, the other one didn't make it onto the city council agenda, so it didn't get referred back to the planning board. Staff prefers that these go in conjunction at the same hearing to city council and to the planning board. So if we can make that happen, that would make it my life easier, cause then I don't have to go to.
The, and these were the recommendations from March, Tuesday.
Well, why don't we move, okay, why don't we move this out long.
Saturday, we do.
You out with October seventh.
Okay, so move.
There you go.
Yeah, move this out, okay, until the second uh hearing is accepted, and they will be scheduled together.
March, Tuesday. Yeah. Yeah.
That's right, here we go.
So October seventh?
Okay.
Yeah, so move.
Yeah.
That work?
And six thirty?
Again.
Six thirty.
Yeah.
Second.
I would second it.
Motion.
We'll do it twice.
Motion made in. Motion made in. All in favor of October seventh, say aye, most say no, motion carries.
Aye.
Directors report, quarry estates subdivision update.
Okay, um, the board already approved this money to be collected. I wrote a letter to the treasurer stating that um, the money needs to go into an account for this and then the mayor makes the decision. Um, there's a little snafu, as there always is with these things, and that the way the bond was set up the um developer has to sign off on it, so the um as well as the city. So the treasurer's office is, they're like a bloodhound, they're going after him, trying to get him to sign this.
Try to find it.
And um get the signature before it, the money can be released.
Okay, now you take an objection.
That's it.
Sell your motion.
Motion to adjourn, I thought it.
All favor say aye, most say no, motion carries.